We'll get on with it. I'd like to thank everyone attending. I would like to begin, sorry. I'd like to begin today's meeting by acknowledging the traditional custodians of the land in which we are gathered and pay my respects to elders past, present and emerging. I'd like to now welcome to the 782nd council meeting. I declare this meeting open at ten o'clock. And I would like to advise meeting attendees, this meeting is being webcasted and audio recorded. Now, can I ask the gallery, can we please be upstanding if you're able to join me for a moment of contemplation? Councillors, at a special ceremony held this week, I had the honour of welcoming 149 of Australia's newest citizens and presenting the City of Logan Australia Day Awards. It was particularly humbling occasion for me and a wonderful reminder of the gratitude I feel about being Australian. I heard fascinating stories of families who have moved from here across the world, particular Iraq, Afghanistan, Lebanon, to name a few. I commend them for taking such a bold leap of faith into the unknown. I have no doubt that these truly exceptional families with strong traditions and from all walks of life will live in our community in harmony. The excitement and gratitude they expressed about a future in a place like Logan that prides itself on its people and its sense of community was truly wonderful to see. Unity is important core value of our society and we have all witnessed the terrible consequences when unity breaks down. I'd like to leave you with a quote from the recently elected Vice President Kamala Harris. Our unity is our strength and our diversity is our power. We reject the myth of us versus them, we are in this together. Thank you. Okay, leave of absence. I note that we have an absent councillor at the moment. Do we have any word on whether he's coming or not? If there's... No? Okay, can we have a... Yep.
councillor, Mayor Power, I'd like to present an apology from councillor Bradley, who's unable to be with us today.
Oh, yep, yep, you're right. So, we've got, we've already, yep, so councillor Bradley and I think we might also put in apologies for councillor Hall. It appears that he's not here, so I will move that motion that councillor Bradley and councillor Hall be granted leave of absence in accordance with section 5.3 C3 of the Local Government and Committee Meeting Code. Is there a second of for the motion? Councillor Murphy has seconded the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. That's been carried. Okay. That's been carried unanimously, therefore the code's been carried. Condolences, I now refer to condolences. Do any councillors have a condolence to raise? I will go through the process. Councillor Lane?
No, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Russell?
No, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Karansky?
No, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Raven?
No, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Fraser?
No, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Hiramai?
Not at this time, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Bannon?
Not at this time, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Stamp?
No, Mr Mayor.
Not at this time, Mr Mayor.
Not at this time, Mr Mayor.
No worries. Okay, so can I please ask you to all to stand for a moment of contemplation for those who have left us? Thank you, councillors. Okay, I now open the floor for congratulations. Do councillors have any congratulations? Yes, councillor Lane?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would like to extend my congratulations to Mr Osman Rain. Mr Rain was awarded an OAM in Australia Day Honours List for his work with the Muslim community, in particular the Muslim Charitable Foundation. Now, this foundation operates locally and internationally. And what it does, it actually provides educational funding for rebuilding in those areas where war or strife has taken place and people need to access housing, education, healthcare. Mr Rain is a great member of the Division Two community. He resides in Underwood with his family. And this OAM is not just a reflection of Mr Rain and his hard work and the work of the foundation, but also the wider community for supporting his efforts. So, could you please extend my congratulations to Mr Rain?
Thank you, councillor Lane. Councillor Russell?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As we're all aware, a lot of Logan's kids returned to school this week. For most of these kids, it's an exciting day. These kids are focused on catching up with friends, checking out their new classrooms and meeting their teachers. For their parents, it's equally exciting, with a focus on seeing their kids progress to another milestone and, let's admit it, the return to the elusive me-time. However, for too many kids and their families in Logan, the return to school heralds the awful shame associated with being that one who doesn't have all of the necessary pens, pencils and books. Thanks to some wonderful groups in Logan, however, this simple barrier to learning has been averted again this year. I wish to congratulate Daisy Hills' Sam Glancy on another hugely successful Kids for Kids school supply drive. Despite COVID-19, Sam and his family and friends collected and donated over 100,000 school supplies this year for children who needed them the most. I also wish to congratulate Slacks Creek's Kingston East Neighbourhood Group, who raised funds across 2020 to provide backpacks full of school supplies to Logan families. Staff and volunteers of King have spent every spare second putting these packs together. Over the past weeks, over 700 backpacks have been given away to families before the start of school. We're so blessed to be surrounded by such kindness here in the city of Logan and I'm proud to belong to a city that values its children. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Karansky?
Not at this time, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Raven?
Yes, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, there was a special event held at Government House last year and one of my residents was very fortunate to be in attendance. And he was actually the guest of honour. His name is Jacob Ballantyne and he's from the Boys Brigade. He received the Queen's Badge from the Governor of Queensland. And Jacob's a Maasen resident. I've known his father for a long time. He's an avid kayaker and very involved in the local community. Jacob is a member of the 16th Brisbane Company of the Sunnybank District Baptist Church and the Queen's Badge is the highest award a member of the brigade can achieve. This isn't an every kid gets a prize sort of an award. To achieve this, Jacob has to have attended the last three years, over 90% of his meetings. He's had to complete an eight-day residential leadership development course, 2,000-word written project, 36 hours of community service, competition at 20 outdoor events and adventure activities and 106 hours of physical and sporting activity. Mr Mayor, I'd like to challenge any one of our councillors to meet those criteria and I think we'd all struggle, myself included. I'd like to ask you to formally congratulate Jacob on this marvellous achievement because he's setting such a fine example for young people in our city. And by doing that and becoming a young leader, we hope that he'll become a leader of the future.
We'll get that organised, councillor Raven. Thank you. Councillor Fraser?
I've none today, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Hiramai?
Not at this time, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Bannon?
I do, Mr Mayor, I have two. Firstly, I'd like to congratulate the Jimboomba Coles family. And I say family because I learnt that on Saturday night. I just assumed Coles was just a workplace. But the way these guys got together and the passion they fell for each other really showed how a good workforce joins like that. It was sensational to see how close-knit and tied they actually are. One of their own, Kelly Ardal, and her family suffered a devastating house fire in which Kelly received burns over 30% of her body, for which she had induced coma. Her husband received burns over his back. Fortunately, the kids weren't home, which was a miracle. And they lost everything and unfortunately didn't have any insurance. The local community rallied together the way that they always do with the support of Logan City Council. They ran a trivia night in this very building on Saturday night, for which myself and Deputy Mayor John Raven donned our Cobra Kai suits because it was an 80s theme. I was Johnny, the good guy, as we've all learnt, and Deputy Mayor was Daniel Sun, who we all know now as the bad guy. But with the support of the community, we managed to raise just over $37,000 for the family on the night, which I think is incredible. And with the community, it doesn't matter if it's a bushfire, if it's a water run to Stan Thorpe, if it's Pink Stumps Day for breast cancer. The way the community get together and get behind it and do the job just blows me away. It just never ceases to amaze me. What I'd also like to give a shout out to the Jimboomba Rotary Club on their first, they did a 100-year anniversary and they had their first inaugural 100-kilometre bike ride. No, Mr Mayor, I didn't do the 100K bike ride, I just manned the barbecue. But they did a stellar job as always, they're a great club. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bannon. Councillor Stamp?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. The Regional Arts Development Fund is a great Logan City Council initiative, which in partnership with the Queensland Government supports the development of arts, culture and heritage in Logan for one-off projects. Today, I would like to ask congratulations be forwarded to Brianna Dinsdale, an amazing 17-year-old songwriter from Logan Home. Brianna has recently launched her debut modern country album, "The Beginnings", which was produced after being awarded a Regional Arts Development Fund grant in May 2020 specifically to produce and record her debut album. It's fantastic to see her project has come to fruition and to hear about her other amazing achievements, including being crowned 2019 Junior Songwriter of the Year at the Tamworth Country Music Festival and her work with well-known country music artists across the country. Brianna will be performing on the 6th of February at the KP Centre, Shayla Park, and I would like to wish her all the best for her upcoming concert and all the success with her future endeavours.
Thank you. Councillor Russell?
I do. Thank you, I do have a couple today. In Division 11 in January, it's a busy month for lots of kids having their 13th birthday and turning into teenagers. My eldest daughter was one of those, so happy birthday to Zoe. But she also had quite a few friends that also turned 13 as well. So, I'd like to wish Jack, Lola, Finlay, Jayla and Michaela a very happy 13th birthday as well. I know their parents will be very busy now with 13-year-olds running around the house like I am. I also have a congratulations for Jeff and Tamika Scriven. They were recently married on the 20th of October 2020. They are actually, in fact, councillor Fraser's residents in Division Seven. They live in Beronia Heights. However, Tamika saw an article in the Park Ridge News a little while ago about the mango trees that are near the Harvest Rise development in Div 11 and she knew that she wanted to hold her wedding ceremony there. I've seen the photos, they're absolutely stunning. So, I'd like to congratulate both of you for holding your wedding ceremony in such a beautiful part of Division 11 and I wish you well for the rest of your future together. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Not at this time, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillors. I now refer to the minutes of the previous ordinary council meeting. I move the minutes of the 781st ordinary council meeting held on the 9th of December 2020 be confirmed. Is there a second of for the motion? Councillor Raven has seconded the motion. Does anyone wish to speak to the motion? No one wishes to speak to the motion. I now open the floor to vote. All those in favour, please raise your hands. That has been carried unanimously, therefore the motion has been carried. We'll go on to business arising from minutes. We have no business arising from the minutes to consider. So, we'll go straight into the committee recommendations. I now refer to the City Planning, Economic Development and Environment Committee meeting held on the 25th of January 2021. Councillor Raven, Chairperson of the City Planning, Economic Development and Environment Committee. You may proceed.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Before we move into discussion, do any councillors have any conflicts of interest they'd like to declare? There being none, I'll now speak to the recommendations. Mr Mayor, it was an action-packed committee and a very interesting one. Probably what I'd like to draw your attention to and the community's attention was item 6.1, which is the citywide growth assumptions. This is some important work that's been done in-house by councils so that we could ensure that not only did we save the rate payer some money by keeping it internal and not using any consultants. I know councillor Hiramai loves it when we do that. It also allowed us to ensure that the quality of the data was top-notch and that it was relevant to councillors' needs. Because so often when you go outside the building, people just don't understand what a local government needs to do its planning effectively. What's so important about this document? And if people want to go through and read the 200 pages of data that councillors all poured through in the lead-up to the committee, they'll see that this outlines the future growth for our city in all different regions of the city, which allows the entire council to work from the same dataset. Why is that important? It means that infrastructure can be delivered where it's needed, in the priority it's needed, so that we get infrastructure just in time, rather than two decades too late. So, this is a document that I know will serve us well over the next decade. It has assumptions all the way out to 2041. It's built on a number of sources of data, not just ABS, using our own internal sources and collating data from the PDAs as well as council's own development front. So, that's so important for us to see the growth in our population, the number of dwellings we're going to have and of course, the amount of employment we have, which I know is very close to your heart, Mr Mayor. Without any further ado, I'll now call for my colleagues to speak to recommendations if they want to.
Thank you, councillor Raven. Any other colleagues wish to speak? No councillors? Okay, there being none, councillor Raven, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I now move that the recommendations of the City Planning, Economic Development and Environment Committee meeting held on the 25th of January be adopted.
Thank you, councillor Raven. Councillor Raven has moved the motion. Can I have a second of for the motion? Councillor Bannon has seconded the motion. I now put the floor to the vote. All those in favour, please raise your hand. That has been carried unanimously, therefore the motion has been carried.
Mr Mayor, could you note that I voted against item 7.1, please?
That will be duly noted.
So, note that I abstained from item 5.1, please.
And that I was against 5.1.
Okay. Any others? No, all good. No worries, thank you. We'll keep moving on. We'll now go to city infrastructure. I now refer to the City Infrastructure Committee meeting held on the 25th of January 2021. Councillor Lane, Chairperson of the City Infrastructure Committee, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Before we move into discussion, do any councillors have any new conflicts of interest to declare on any items? Please advise of the item number only at this stage. There being none, I'll now speak to the recommendations, Mr Mayor. During the committee meeting, we heard about the opportunity from Energex to ascertain what sort of lighting we would have in our streets going into the future. Councillors were given the opportunity to view these lights and the impact that they would have in the community and we came up with a solution. We also looked at renaming several roads, both in Beranbar and in Bar Scrub. And a progress report on the Capital Water Works Programme also was raised during the meeting. One of the most important ones, I think, that we were looking at was the Logan Home and Bentley wastewater strategy, which councillor Murphy had a great interest in, given her plans for the Bentley Centre. I'd like to thank council officers for their work that they do in putting the committee together and making sure that those reports come forward.
Thank you. Any other councillors? Sorry, councillor Lane?
That's okay. I just wanted to actually open the floor up for discussion. I'd like to open the floor up for discussion, if that's okay, Mr Mayor.
Councillors, any further discussion? No?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I now move that the recommendations of the City Infrastructure Committee meeting held on the 25th of January 2021 be adopted.
Thank you, councillor Lane. Councillor Lane has moved the motion. Can I have a second of for the motion? Thank you. Councillor Stamp has seconded the motion. I now put the matter to the vote. All those in favour, please raise your hands. That has been carried unanimously, therefore the motion has been carried. Is there any exceptions to any of the voting matters? No? Okay, we'll keep moving along. City Lifestyle, I now refer to the City Lifestyle Committee meeting held on the 25th of January 2021. Councillor Karansky, Chairperson of the City Lifestyle Committee, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Before we move into discussions, do any councillors have any new conflicts of interest that they wish to declare? There being none, I would now like to speak to my recommendations. In the City Lifestyle Committee on Monday, councillors were provided with updates on some exciting community projects and initiatives undertaken across the city of Logan. The passion our councillors have for their community was evident when discussions turned to the local infrastructure planning programme report and no doubt many of my colleagues will have further comments to make in due course. These projects will proceed with the best possible outcomes for the community in mind. Councillors were advised on the overall progress associated with the delivery of the City of Logan Safe City Strategy and Action Plan. Now that the actions of the previous strategy have been completed, the focus is on delivering the outcomes in the action plan for 21 to 25. I commend the collaborative efforts of my fellow councillors and officers in this arena and I know this is an area that you're all passionate about. Also pleasing to hear were the outcomes and achievements of the council's second reconciliation action plan. We're really looking forward to further working on progressing the reconciliation space. The plans to develop a third reconciliation action plan were presented to council and again, I know that that plan is something that council is fully endorse.
Thank you, councillor Karansky. Any further comments from any of the other councillors? No? Councillor, councillor Raven?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity to speak to the local infrastructure projects report, where there was a number of exceptions that needed to be put through council. This is an important part of the process because obviously, when we want to get best value for money, sometimes we need the clubs to deliver on the infrastructure. But also, it's a matter of timing at the moment. Council's sports, leisure and facilities team is so overwhelmed with the amount of investment that's going into our sporting facilities across the city from councillors supported by officers through the local infrastructure projects programme is that the delays that we will see for infrastructure for some projects could be quite some time, pushing into next financial year. One in particular I wanted to point out was my support of Logan Brothers, which people will know is not in Division Five, it's just outside of it. But a great many very talented young people go there to play for years. Ever since I've been elected in 2016, they've been trying to get a fence installed on their property. The previous councillor wasn't supportive of it, the previous Division Two councillor. Fortunately now, they have great representation from councillor Lane and she's been very supportive, as have I, to see a fence put around this field that is used by over 900 players, all juniors, every year. This is such a big club. It's the largest junior club in Queensland, a very successful club. A number of the gentlemen who are the great players who carried Queensland to its State of Origin victory this year, the worst team in State of Origin history, you'll recall, Mr Mayor, according to some, were carried on the backs, on the shoulders and the tackles of players that were trained and developed at Logan Brothers. And it's fantastic to see them get the fencing that they deserve to keep their field secure, to keep their players safe and to make sure that we don't have any more four-legged equestrian visitors who like to leave their message for the players when they come to training.
Thank you, councillor Raven. I'm also a big supporter of Logan Brothers, they're a great club. Councillor Karansky? I don't believe there's any other councillors wish to speak? No? Councillor Karansky?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I now move that the recommendations of the City Lifestyle Committee held on the 25th of January 2021 be adopted.
Thank you, councillor Karansky. Councillor Karansky has moved the motion. Can I have a second of the motion? Councillor Lane has seconded the motion, therefore I put the matter to the vote. All those in favour, please raise your hands. That has been carried unanimously, therefore the motion has been carried. Is there any exceptions to any of the voting patterns on that that wish to be stated? No? Okay, we'll keep moving on. City Governors?
Mr Mayor, my apologies. I actually voted against item 4.2, if that could be recorded.
Okay, that will be noted. Okay, we'll keep moving. City Governors, I now refer to the City Governors Committee meeting held on the 25th of January 2021. Councillor Wilcox, Acting Chairperson of the City Governors Committee, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Before we move into discussion, do any councillors have any new conflicts of interest to declare on any items? And please advise the item number only at this stage. Firstly, I will refer to item 4.2, which was deferred to today's meeting. I will now hand back to the mayor to facilitate nominations for the appointment of the Chairperson of the City Governance Committee.
Thank you, councillor Wilcox. Councillors, I do note that we've only received one nomination for the position of Chairperson, being councillor Wilcox. Do any further councillors wish to nominate? I note, okay, so there's no other further nominations. I note that a report recommendation is amended to form a motion to move that councillor Wilcox as Chairperson and councillor Murphy to remain as Deputy Chairperson. This motion is now displaying on your screen behind me. Yep. Is there a mover for the motion? Councillor Raven has moved the motion. Do I have a second of? Councillor Bannon has seconded the motion. I now ask, does anyone wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Raven?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And I rise to speak in favour of the motion. I just wanted to commend both councillors, Wilcox and Murphy, for the work that they've been doing in the lead-up to this vote. Even though neither one formally held the position, they've hit the ground running. We've got a big budget to deliver this year, Mr Mayor, and a lot of governance policies that still need fine-tuning and work to make sure that they work for both the council, the community and the organisation. And I've got absolute faith that both of these very capable women will be working together, hand in glove, to make sure that the city is well-served and the community can have confidence that our stellar record on governance and the excellent budgets that we've been delivering over the last few years will continue. So, well done and thank you very much for your service. I know it's a voluntary role and there's a lot of extra work involved. I'm sure we're all here to support you, but I'd like you to know that if you ever need a hand from me, for what it's worth, I'm here to help.
Thank you, councillor Raven. Any other comments? No? Okay, I now open the floor to vote. All those in favour, please raise your hands. That's duly noted, that has been carried unanimously, therefore the motion has been carried. Councillor Wilcox, you now proceed with the remainder of the recommendations.
Thank you. And thank you councillor Raven for those very kind words. Firstly, I would just like to thank my fellow councillors for entrusting both myself and councillor Murphy with the positions of Chair and Deputy Chair of the City Governance Committee. We're both looking forward to working cohesively with all of the councillors and all of the Logan City Council staff on this committee. I'm honoured to be elected to the Chair in not just my first year of the first term, but altogether. And I encourage all of you here to work together with us to ensure that we provide a budget and a committee that we can be proud of together and to work on policy decisions that we will create long-lasting impacts on the city as a connected cohort. Thank you from both councillor Murphy and I and thank you for entrusting us in these positions. So, thank you, Mr Mayor. I will now refer to item 4.3, which was also, oh, sorry, we've done that one?
Yep.
So, sorry. I will now speak to the remainder of the recommendations. I actually don't have a lot of time.
No, we've got to go back to 4.3.
We've got to go back to 4.3. Sorry. I will now refer to 4.3, which was also deferred to today's meeting and I note that councillor Murphy has nominated for the appointed position to the Audit and Risk Committee. I will now call for the mover of the amended motion, which reads as follows. That in accordance with the Part 7.2 of the Audit and Risk Committee Charter, councillor Murphy be appointed to the Audit and Risk Committee.
Okay, so who's going to move the motion? Councillor Raven has moved the motion for the amended motion. Is there a second of? Councillor Wilcox has seconded the motion. I now open the floor to vote. All those in favour, please raise your hands. That has been carried unanimously, therefore the motion has been carried. Councillor Wilcox, you now may proceed.
Thank you again, Mr Mayor. The remainder of the recommendations, we actually only had one more and that was on the procurement, just amending the calendar. It was a robust It was a robust debate to amend it, and I thank all of you for that debate. And I'm pleased to say that we came to a unanimous decision and hopefully it will get voted on now. So if there's any further speakers?
Thank you councillor Wilcox. Councillors, anyone wish to make any comments? No? There being no speakers, councillor Wilcox, I hand it back to you.
Sorry, I've got my training wheels on today. I will now move that the recommendations of the City Governance Committee held on the twenty fifth of January two thousand and twenty one, with the exception of items four point two and four point three, be adopted.
Thank you councillor Wilcox. Councillor Wilcox has moved the motion. Can we have a second of the motion? Councillor Lane has seconded the motion. I now put the matter to the vote. Floor to vote. All those in favour, please raise your hands. That has been carried unanimously, therefore the motion has been carried. Thank you councillor Wilcox. Councillor Reports, we have no council reports to consider. Late reports. I now refer to item eleven point one, which is a late report regarding the Audit General Final Management Letter. Before we open discussion on this item, do any councillors have a conflict of interest? No conflicts of interest been recorded. I now refer to the Director of Organisational Services, Mr Robert Strachan, to open discussion. Mr Strachan, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Good morning councillors. I'm here today to talk to this late report in relation to the Order of General Financial Management Letter. Section two one two of the Local Government Regulation provides that local government general purpose financial statements are provided to the Queensland Audit Office or their subcontract order. In the case of council, that's Deloitte's, to undertake the audit of the financial statements on an annual basis. Section fifty four of the Audit General Act also includes that the Audit General might provide may provide council or the mayor with observations with regard to that particular audit. And we did receive the final management letter from the Queensland Audit Office on the fourth of September twenty twenty, and that was forwarded to the to the Office of the Mayor. Those particular recommendations included in that report or that report itself was included in the finance, the Audit and Risk Committee for discussion in in September of twenty twenty. And it was it was mentioned in a report that went to the City Governance Committee on the twenty first of October twenty twenty. However, the actual report itself from the Queensland Audit Office wasn't attached to that report that went to the City Governance Committee. Importantly, in relation to the requirement of section two one three of the Local Government Regulation, there is a requirement that that observation report from the Audit General is tabled at an ordinary council meeting in the following meeting, following the receipt of that particular report. There is a timeframe attached to that, and that is that it needs to be presented to the next ordinary council meeting. When I was asked the question by the mayor in the City Governance Committee this week in relation to whether there was a timeframe, I indicated that I didn't think there was. That was incorrect. I've since reviewed the legislation and it has to be tabled at the next ordinary council meeting. So it's important today that I correct the record and apologise for that mistake. So I've spoken to the manager of the City Governance Branch, and we will ensure that controls are put in place to make sure that the the manager, the letter from QAO or the report from QAO is tabled at the following ordinary council meeting. Ideally, it would flow through the Audit and Risk Committee to the City Governance Committee and then on to the ordinary council meeting. However, but based on the timing of the of the report from QAO, we may not be able to facilitate that. And and we will simply need to table that at the ordinary council meeting before it's gone through the Audit Committee and the Governance Committee. So I apologise for that. We're tabling the report today from last financial year. You can see there are a number of audit recommendations, or they've identified a number of areas for improvement. Probably the most significant one to talk to is in relation to the completion of assets and revenue. There was a significant deficiency identified with regard to the timeliness with regard to bringing on donated assets. So they're assets that are constructed by developers and then handed over to council upon completion. The bulk of the donated assets that we have on our balance sheet come from the priority development areas. And we do have difficulties working with the state government to get the information we're required to bring those assets on in a timely way. However, the finance manager is working very closely with parts of council and the state government to refine those processes to ensure those assets are brought on in a in a in a timely way. So it's definitely an area of focus for the preparation of the financial statements moving forward this year. Happy to take questions.
Thank you, Mr Strachan. Councillors, I now open up the floor for questions. No questions? Robert, oh, sorry, Mr Strachan, I just have to say that that at least the system's working in that these things are getting picked up. I don't believe any organisation is perfect, and to actually see that these things are being collected and addressed, I think, is a is a is a good message to everyone out in the community that the audit is working and we have picked things up. So I understand what actually happened, and it was a bit unfortunate, but people make mistakes. Any other speakers? No further speakers. I now ask for someone to move the motion. Councillor Wilcox has moved the motion. Is there a second of the motion? Councillor Lane has seconded the motion. I now put the matter to the floor to vote. All those in favour, please raise your hands. That has been carried unanimously. Thank you. Therefore, it's been carried. Okay. Well, that's all our business. I'll now open to general business. Now, where were we last year? Councillor Fraser? No, councillor Hiramaya?
Not at this time, Mr Mayor.
Oh, sorry. Seem to have. Okay. Before we go on general business, we'll go to petitions. Are there any petitions available? Anyone wish to submit a petition? No petitions? Okay, thank you. Consideration of notified motions? We have no notified motions to consider. General business. Start again. Now, where were we last year? Who who actually started last year? Remember? I can't recall. All right, we'll start at councillor Stemp and we'll work our way around.
Not today, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Wilcox?
Not today, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Murphy?
Not today, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Lane?
Of course I do, Mr Mayor. I didn't speak to item four point one in the committee stage for a specific reason. The Local Infrastructure Programme Fund allows divisional councillors to facilitate in local projects, to work with local community groups, to work with local residents on great outcomes for the community. The report that was handed down today allowed for Logan Brothers to build a fence around their facility. But that wasn't the only group that was allowed to do something today. Logan Brothers is an amazing group. It's the largest junior rugby league football club in the whole of South East Queensland, and it produces superstars. There's no doubt about that. What it also does, it produces a great fun time for families. It produces opportunities for kids to make friends and to build those friendships, to host functions, to host potentially in the future maybe interest cup. But Logan Allbreeds Dog Obedience Association also got a fence out of the Local Infrastructure Fund from Division Two. Logan Metro FC also received funding to build a fence between their their two fields to stop over-exuberant spectators from spilling over onto the field during play. We've had money spent on Woodridge State School car park in rejuvenating that for the start of twenty twenty one to make things safer for parents and children returning to the school. Kingston on Polaris Avenue is currently having investigations happen to make it safer for kids coming through from Loughlin Street into Polaris Avenue to cross that road, which is a very busy road of an afternoon. We've got so many community projects that are actually occurring as a result of the Local Infrastructure Project Fund that it's really hard for our lifestyles group to actually keep up with the work that we're trying to do in each of all of our divisions. Four point one was actually about asking whether or not those groups had the capacity to run their local projects, to put a fence in, to put it bluntly, to actually build things in their centres, which are very simple and easygoing. And fortunately, councillors actually agreed that that was a good opportunity for those clubs to step up and do that job, to relieve some of the pressure on our council officers, who have so many projects going throughout the city because we have some very eager and enthusiastic councillors. So I just want to say thank you to my fellow councillors for giving the green light to those clubs, for putting your faith in them, and I'm sure they won't let us down. But if they do, we will be there to catch them if they fall. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Lane. Councillor Russell?
Not at this time, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Karansky?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just wanted to make comment that I had the tremendous opportunity to actually attend a hundred years of Rotary event in councillor Murphy's electorate in Benleigh on Australia Day. And councillor Stemp was also in attendance. And one of the things that struck all three of us is the report that they provided on what was the fastest growing area of homelessness, not only in Queensland but Australia wide. And unfortunately, that cohort is in women over the age of fifty five. And I wanted to raise that here today because I was actually quite astounded. I think like most people in our community, this is probably going on quietly and unrecognized. And I'm very proud to be part of a council that has actually got a cradle-to-grave approach to looking at our residents and making sure that we're doing what we can in the space that we occupy to make sure that no residents are left behind. I also just wanted to touch on Australia Day and just thank the amazing council officers who were able to put together an incredible event, and it has been so long since we were able to come together as a cohort and celebrate some of the great things about what it is to be Logan. And, Mr Mayor, I commend you on your presentation on the day and welcoming our new citizens and of course, the amazing Australia Day awards. But I think that it's the amazing staff who do all the work behind the scenes who really should be recognised for that great event. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Karansky. Councillor Rovin?
Yes, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I've got a problem. I listen, I listen, just one, just one, for the time being. I listen to other councillors talking about their amazing lip projects being delivered, and I would love to deliver lip projects in my community. In fact, my residents are asking me, what's happening in Division Five? Where's the money being spent? Now, there's some great planning work being done on a huge project for the Crestmead Skate Park, which I know the young people in my area are very excited, and so are their parents, very excited to to be involved in. But I've got about three hundred thousand dollars of local infrastructure projects that are sitting behind red tape. So in this place in October last year, I asked the previous acting director of Water and Road Infrastructure when he would be getting legal advice back, and he said, in the near future. And to his credit, it was the near future. It was only a day later. Come back this year, and I'm like, I want to deliver some projects. Where are we at with that? I was told I'd have to wait a month to meet with the director to discuss that. What I would like, Mr Acting CEO, is that by the time we come back to the next round of committee, that the consultation problem we have, that we can't send letters to our residents because for some reason consultation must be done by council officers, not by councillors, is resolved. I don't want any more excuses. I don't want any more reasons. I don't want to wait two weeks for a draft letter to be put out. It worked fine for twenty years straight. There were no problems with the consultation. My understanding from talking to staff is that the main issue is actually a back-of-house problem, a document access problem. Where staff are concerned that if councillors are the ones who are doing the consultation, that they may not be able to access the documents that we sent out. I'm happy to send a copy to whoever it needs to be sent to, Mr Acting CEO. I don't really care how it gets sorted out, but it's been long enough. I've been waiting five months to ask if I can put some speed bumps into Marsden. I've been waiting three months to see if I can put some footpaths into Crestmead. These were all commitments that my community told me were very important to them, and I want to deliver them. They want me to deliver them. They're getting angry, and that's why I'm frustrated. Because if my community is telling me that I'm doing a bad job and it's because the organisation is holding back my capacity to perform, then I expect you to do something about it.
You wish to respond, Mr Acting CEO? No? Okay. Thank you councillor Rovin. Councillor Fraser?
None today, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Hiramaya?
Not at this time, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Bannon?
Not at this time, Mr Mayor.
Well, thank you councillors. It's been a fairly busy week. I think we've done our best. It's been a very successful week. As you know, I appeared at the Senate Inquiry on inland rail, and I'm satisfactory. I believe we put our case forward, and I believe the residents were happy with our performance in there. So that was great. The citizenship awards ceremony, that was fantastic. I actually felt like a mayor this week and sort of woke up to the fact that the mayor is an important job sometimes, and I actually enjoyed it. But I'd just like to also take the opportunity to say that people in the community probably see me cough all the time. I've been tested for COVID. I have pneumonia. I am recovering. I am under a specialist. I am under medication. Please don't worry when you see me out there coughing. I'll probably be coughing for a few months yet. But I just want to let that know because I know people look at me. It's it's not great having pneumonia in a COVID crisis time because everyone thinks you're carrying the disease, but I have been tested. So with that, I'll conclude the meeting at ten forty four. Thank you councillors. See you next time.